Mr. President, I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
Thank you for asking.
Do we need to open my hand? Well, I don't have one on my...
So would I.
Why would I? Are we waiting on somebody? Alrighty. So, school highlights, and Dr. Anderson's over the podium.
This is always one of our most favorite times of the year. Normally, we give out the traveling trophy for attendance, and this time, we really will have a number of schools forward to really acknowledge our above and beyond winners. And so with that, I'll be calling up each of the principals, if the principal is here, for them to share a little bit about their above and beyond winner, and then they'll ask their above and beyond winner to come up. Above and beyond winners, we ask that you remain for about five minutes because at the very end, the board wants to take a picture with all of you and with your administrator. So, without further ado, we will start with Ross Elementary, Mrs. Blevins, who by the way, was selected by her peers to be the school district principal of the year. So she asked you just yet.
So Grandma Joyce is a community member who has grandchildren that attend our school at Ross Elementary. She spends every day at Ross assisting in kindergarten, and she has also volunteered to help with breakfast service during the school year. Grandma Joyce has been a staple at Ross for years. She's not able to attend this evening because she's serving dinner at her church, but we do appreciate her service to Ross.
And let me give you, Ms. Morton's, also Grandma Joyce's, certificate. Alright, for our next school, it's an administrator from French Middle School here this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and read and ask for our above and beyond members to come up. It's Tim Wilson here with us this evening. And let me share with you what French has shared about you. French Middle School's activities coordinator, Tim Wilson, was nominated for the outstanding service to students. Mr. Wilson does grade checks on student athletes. We like that. For coaches, you help with coaches staying organized, and you even cover practices for coaches when they're unable to be there. Additionally, Mr. Wilson also makes sure that student athletes are getting the best experience possible while playing sports at French Middle School. His enthusiastic personality is one that strikes throughout the building. We thank you so much, Mr. Wilson, for all you do for our students. And I do remember Ms. Hoffman, their vacation started today. She actually sent a note in about that, and so that's why she is not here. Continuing on, I'd like for the principal from State Street, Ms. Sharp, please come on up. Now, turn over to you.
Larry and Jackie Miller, and they are neighbors of Lana Latimer's. Lana's one of our kindergarten teachers. And they have done many tasks for Lana over the years, but over the last several years, they have taken on the task of supplying State Street with all of our carnival prizes. And she started the first year, and they go garage selling every weekend, all the time, searching for items for the State Street Carnival. And Jackie works the prize room for us, and the first year, we ran a little short on the prizes. And so Jackie got serious. And they were hitting those garage sales, and it has been a real treat to have them help us financially by donating that. Then the PTO is able to save that money, and the kids love getting into that prize room. The carnival is a really important event at State Street, and Larry and Jackie helped us make that possible.
Our next school, staff members, and these volunteers are actually at two schools. Who have some outstanding students, have got an Eisenhower graduation, and what exceptional young people you have gone through Eisenhower and are at DePica High. But with that, an administrator from Eisenhower is Mr. Adiva here, and I know that Mrs. Morrissey is here. So Ms. Morrissey, come on down. Since she was at Eisenhower, she will be representing both of you this evening.
Dr. Morrison, Dr. Anderson, members of the board, as always, it is a privilege, and it is a special privilege tonight, to present Ms. Dan Travis James' family. I have to tell you, as a group of people, their extended family is amazing, you know, the Jameses in general. But I have been really blessed to have had Trevin and Misty as a part of my extended family. They're on PTO, they've come to book studies. They have done anything and everything at times that... Not every parent was able to come and attend, they could need feedback, and they've always done that. So it started at Eisenhower. One of their students had been straight in, I mean, on a roll, three years running COVID. They know from the parent's side as well as from the school's side how to help students achieve excellence, and they have great feedback. Formerly on white bread, we've had discussions about how recent packs, we've had discussions about academia. They may not always agree with me, they're not fit to give me information that is needed. I hired Misty when I got to the high school and asked her to be, at the time, our ISS person. She's helped make the transition to restoring practices and working in behavior, behavior room and academic support room. I can't speak enough to the countless hours that they will spend staying involved with their own children, but on behalf of other students too. They are a real asset to our community, and the white bread is a great place to recognize them this evening. Thank you for all you've done for me in two different schools. I appreciate it greatly.
Now, we'll be taking a group picture at the end, but since the whole DePica High team, you all came as well, so Richard, come on up. Might as well be the whole team, with the whole family, to get a school picture. Come on up.
To recognize two people this evening. Actually, we weren't the two. Apparently daunting task when I first became the principal at DePica High School was to replace a 34, I believe, year veteran, a band teacher, Steve Hollenman. I knew the importance of hiring someone who could step in with excellence and, you know, think and program his own to celebrate the success of the past, and we couldn't have picked any better. I still remember interviewing Eric Ratchoff. We did a Skype. Ken was a surprise. He had a Polish shirt, was horrified that we were gonna see him. I still remember that. But even, and I like this Steve Hollenman language, even through the Skype, his heart and his passion for children really came through. Once he got here, I can tell you, there is nothing quite like overseeing a band program, especially one that has had the history of excellence that DePica High's program has had. What I relished is not only the fact that he's maintained and made it his own in his own way, but the fact that he has interfaced with Mr. Hollenman, he has been able to maintain a relationship of values that brings him back and has him be a part of the students that had him. And that's done in a manner that doesn't in any way diminish from either one of them. And that's been really heartwarming to watch, because I've taken other programs in my house, and that can be a very difficult thing to do. He will work countless hours. He raises money with them. He takes them wherever they need to go. He has passionately pleaded with me to add instrumentals so the students can do small group ensembles or do things that help them grow and move on to the next level. So I am very appreciative of the fact that, in some ways, we were just a little lucky and blessed, but we certainly have hired someone who earns the above and beyond and has continued to celebrate and continue to make a great effort. So it's my pleasure to be the partner, Eric Ratchoff.
Thank you. We deserve the ones. So appreciate it. Now, DePica High team, since you're all here, we can just take one. I still will acknowledge Mr. and Mrs. Stewart. They go above and beyond Mr. Meadows' students and their families through the after-school program. They provide tutoring, fellowship, and meals. The program is called Bridge, and is part of the larger Lunch Bites program, so we thank them for all that they do for our schools. Is there a staff member this evening here from Chase Middle School? Ms. Norman, sitting right in front of me. With staff, and look where... That should be above and beyond winner. Alright. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Norman. Come here.
So, I'm here to present Heidi Nelson, who is a parent in our building. She also has a student at State Street. And Heidi has been volunteering almost daily in our building since January. She started out working in the office, helping out with clerical things. Now, teachers are tapping her for assistance with projects. Next year, she's going to work in our building in more of an official capacity as an intern as part of her Health and Human Services Bachelor's Degree, and her plan is to become a Master's in Social Work, so it is possible someday she might actually work for our school district. Heidi is active not only in the office, but she's also out in the halls helping great students. So she's really brought a bright spot to our school, and I just am very appreciative of her efforts for us.
And we do, we also have Jardine Middle School. Do we have a staff member from Jardine Middle School here this evening? Ryan Key here this evening with us.
Mr. Key actually is on the campus with some of our students right now. He is not here either.
I will briefly read Mr. Key's sum of acknowledgements. Nominated by Principal Hare, he shared that Mr. Key is a loyal volunteer to the students of Jardine Middle School despite being a full-time college student. As has already been stated, he's already with our students, traveling to St. Louis on a trip. He makes time to volunteer for the Jardine Wildlife Program. So we thank Mr. Key for all that he does for DePica Public Schools. We want to give all of our above and beyond winners another applause this evening. I'll mention one additional highlight. The above and beyond winners, please come up and bring your family members with you so that we can have a photo. Yeah, you guys right up there. We're back. The students are here with their family. And so come on up, because the board loves to take pictures with students and parents, so the whole family can be in the photo. The other highlight that I do want to mention, if you're someone that gets the Inchromes Business Magazine, in the Inchromes Business Magazine, as of this month, if you do get this, please turn to page when you get home, 58, because they have the list of the 50 candidates that you should know. And we are so excited that Mr. Larry Robbins, who is our deputy superintendent, is listed as one of the 50 candidates that you should know. Congratulations, Mr. Robbins. And well, members, each of you have a copy at your desk. Alright, we're gonna take just a three-minute break.
If I may, Mr. President, I'll just say for the audience's benefit, this is not anything required to do at all of the case law committees. If you have a spouse that supports the school district and you're on the board and they're a member of the bargaining unit, you technically cannot read the individual benefit by really for anything to pay or anything. Contract, that covers everyone as you know, but just to avoid the appearance of any, I always like to remove.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote? So, I will take a motion to include 10.1. Mr. Wilson? Yes. Second. Any discussion? Ready to vote? We are ready for superintendent's report.
We do items to share with you, but we're going to go a little out of order. We're going with the Equity Council report first, so we'd like for Dr. New to come forward. As the PowerPoint is pulled up, Ms. Dr. New will be sharing a little bit about the year and what was covered. Also, she'll start off with acknowledging any Equity Council members that are in the audience. We co-chair the Equity Council. As a reminder for those that are not aware, this is part of our strategic plan. There are five pillars to our plan, and equity and climate are one of those pillars. I'll turn it over to Dr. New to begin the presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Anderson, and good evening, board, and President Morrison. And first of all, I would like for those who are Equity Council members that are here tonight to please stand so that we can formally recognize you. You have Dr. Mahia, who's the principal currently at Violet Park Central, but will be principal of Dual Language Elementary next year. We have Ms. Carol Bradbury, and she is a local artist as well as a community representative on our Equity Council. We have Superintendent... Blenner, you see? I know, I was switching. And she is at Ross Elementary, and she's gonna be sharing with you just a moment. And also, we have Ms. Julie Watson, who did not stand, but she is a part of our Equity Council.
And I'll interject, just so this isn't a strong story. She's not superintendent, but she's principal, in fact, principal of the year. Yes! But she is the elementary principal of the year, so I know she feels like superintendent. Congratulate her, but we want to thank all of you all for serving.
Well, thank you. Hi, Paul. That's what happens when you hire 195 people in two weeks. My brain has flipped out my left ear. But thank you. In fact, I didn't even remember saying superintendent, so... But thank you so much. We have a slide prepared that will share with you some of the things that we have done as an Equity Council this year, as well as our focus. In alignment with our district's mission and vision, we have been working very hard to strengthen the diversity within our district by fostering partnerships with staff families and the community. And when Ms. Blevins comes to share with us, she'll tell you about some of the things that are happening at Ross Elementary. As you know, DePica Public Schools received the fourth National Magna Award, and a portion of that was stressing the work that we are doing as an Equity Council. On the next slide, we have been partnering with the Midwest Equity Group, and they have provided two opportunities for our district staff to attend trainings. And so they offer their services at no cost to us. And they also will be providing professional development for our staff in the fall. So we are seeing that definitely as a beneficial relationship. As we move forward, we have subcommittees that have identified issues within our district that they would like to address, and some of those issues are also within our community. We hold the group to find out the things that they thought were issues that we needed to address as a council. And the primary ones that emerged were poverty, immigration, access to education, racism, civil rights. And so from those, the ones that were mentioned but didn't get as many votes were access to health care, sexism, heterosexism, labor laws, and ageism. And so as we looked at those primary ones, we identified topics that we needed to target. And subcommittees were formed to focus on those topics. And those subcommittees were ones such as parent involvement and parent academy, college and career readiness outcomes, early childhood, mental health, suicide, and bullying. And so as we move forward, we are going to be looking at how we, as an Equity Council, can address those areas. There is some data that follows on the next two slides, and there will be future presentations that will focus on that. But as I introduce to you, Ms. Blevins, I want to share with you, I was in her building in December. I was visiting some of our student teachers, and her Ross staff's Friday Focus was shared with me. And it appears that this is something that she sends out to her staff every week. And in that introductory note from her, she said to her staff, which she addressed as the Rossam staff, she said, "As the BLT, which is the Building Leadership Team, and Equity Council look at our discipline data on a regular basis, I continue to be concerned by the high number of African-American males who maintain high numbers of behavior referrals at Rossam." She says more things, but she also sends them a connection to a 17-minute Harvard EdCast about a special school called Urban Prep, and what they are doing to ensure the success of African-American males from the south side of Chicago. And to me, this made a very clear statement that she is intent on improving what we know to be data that is perpetuated by certain behaviors that can be corrected through education. And so I'm going to ask her to come at this time and share with you what she is doing with her staff at Ross.
Thank you. So, at Ross Elementary, we have established an Equity Committee, and that has grown out of just some PD that we did at the beginning of the year. What's your why? Why do you do what you do? Really trying to dive into the purpose of why we're doing what we're doing. I believe that what we do is more than a job, and so if people really can align their purpose to what they're doing, that they will feel the same way. We also took a lot of time to talk about, you know, who are we? What does our background, our journey, how do our experiences in life impact us and influence how we navigate the professional world? How we navigate and interact with our colleagues, as well as with our students? So some of that was, you know, obviously talking a little bit about bias. We all have it. So how does that impact what we do on a day-to-day basis? And from there, then, we just started to organically grow this committee. The committee began by talking just a lot about, you know, who they are, what they bring to the table, and what they hope to get out of the experience of establishing this committee at Ross. And so we had a lot of great conversation, and we really wanted this to, you know, take this school-wide and make this more impactful. So what could we do? And so we've done some things. We've established some mentoring. We've established, we've done some social justice, social events, where we've gone to Brown versus Board and done some things that, you know, participated in some of the events that they've had. But we really wanted something that was going to be long-lasting, and so I have sent some documents around. One of the first things we did was take a look at the Teaching Tolerance Social Justice Standards, and we decided that we wanted that to be a part of what we do at Ross. And so we unpacked those. There are four anchor standards: identity, diversity, action, and justice. And we chose two standards underneath each of those that we felt needed to really come be part of everything we do, really a foundational piece at Ross, and that we wanted to start that next year. So this year, I would say this was our planning year. And so we put this in the language and embedded it into our CI3T plan. So you will see that it is in the language. We want students. Here are the outcomes we want for students. And staff's gonna need to do this in order to get there. Parents will need to do this, and leadership's gonna need to do this. And so that's where we started. And so from there, you know, we will plan professional development. We will, for example, one of the things that we might do is we are getting ready to order some novel studies, and we are going to align those with the themes in each one of those four anchor standards so that what, that's not more than just a document. It's becoming what we do at Ross. The second document, our leadership team embedded some of the ideas from the social justice work that we were doing into our core values. Ross has some existing value statements. There were four of them. I pulled them off the website. We kind of talked a little bit about them. We revised them a little bit. We added the scholarship, and that is a work in progress, so that document is not done. But we wanted to say, here's who we are. This is what we value. This is why we value it. And then this is how we're gonna hold ourselves accountable, and this is what you're gonna see on a daily basis. So we wanted to make that really visible and part of everything that we do. So that's the work that we have started at Ross, which we've just, just started. So I'm excited for what the future will bring and how this will come alive at our school.
Thank you. Can you state for questions? And so that gives you a glimpse into what an Equity Council at a school looks like. So we asked this year for the Equity Councils to be pushed in, for schools to have their own Equity Councils. Mrs. Morrissey has one, and several of the other members of that team. The next step of that will be the Student Equity Council. So this upcoming year, we'll be looking for those same schools to then have students involved in this diversity dialogue and social justice work school-wide. Do you have questions for our principal of the year? That just sounds so good. They had to pick two, so that you know Ms. Soper is the other one.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Blevins and Dr. New, for excellent presentation. I am excited to see how this goes forward, and definitely to see an Equity Council at our school. And the work that you're doing is wonderful. I love the fact that it is so laser-focused on achievement. At the end of the day, that's really kind of, that is our job. That's what we're focused on. I wanted to ask some, beg your forgiveness first, and then ask some help in reading the Anchor Standard document that you passed to us. I guess these were, you mentioned there were four that are identified as part of the literature, and there are three that you chose and you're incorporating.
No, all four of those. So that is the first part of it, was the Anchor Standards, and they come from the Southern Poverty Law Center's website, Teaching Tolerance. And so the four standards, the anchor ones that you see in the gray are identity, diversity, action, and justice. So if you notice, this is quarter one. So quarter one, we're gonna focus on identity. Not only our students' identity, but also our staff. And so we're going to start the year with really talking about our personality, our character strengths, also our background, and what that brings to the table, and how that helps us interact. And so what we've done is we've chosen two standards underneath that Anchor Standard. And so what we've done is we've chosen two standards underneath that anchor standard.
I see now, so my, my, I guess, aging eyes were failing me, and maybe it's because it was in purple, I couldn't read it.
Yeah.
But the third, fourth, uh, fourth standard there is action, I see, I just couldn't tell.
Correct. And so our CI3T plan is written in this language, students will, if staff will, if families will, if leadership will. So we took the anchors, the standard for the student, and then we built that out so that everybody, all stakeholders, kind of know what they're responsible for.
Excellent. Yep, so I see it. Black letters on top of the floor. The other question I had for you was just, can you give me kind of an idea, preview of what the student involvement in the equity council at school would look like? What kind of topics will you have to deal with? How will they be involved? Will there be enrichment that's, you know, built in and connected to what they're learning in the classroom, or even what they get to do?
Sure. Well, I hope to have really, you know, this building-wide. So, you know, using these topics and part of like our academics every day is going to be important. So that's why I talked about like having novel studies at every grade level, so that we are talking about this with everyone. We've talked about having an equity council that's kind of, kind of like the superintendent's council, the principal's council, that would talk about just anything that is on their mind. Really, a lot of what we should be talking about is going to come from them. So we will start that probably in the fall, and we're still in the planning stages. But, you know, we have, there's a lot of topics that impact our scholars, and especially on the east side of Topeka. And so just hearing them, we've had some mentoring groups, and they've already expressed, you know, concerns about maybe how some of their teachers may interact with them, and maybe some of, you know, I've heard them talk about, you know, the biases that maybe their teachers or other people might have, you know, with them. So I think some of those things that are important to them, that can stand in the way of achievement, will be some of the things that we unpack, but it's, we're still planning.
Well, I really do appreciate it, again, I want to commend you for the work that you're doing, and I think it's valuable work, it's very important, it has merit, and I look forward to seeing it come to fruition and look forward to supporting it to come forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have just a couple of things. One, through my term on the board, I've noticed kids respond to relationships, and not just one-on-one relationships, more than anything else. So, and I see that's included. The other thing that I also noticed, maybe even before I was on the board, is that PTOs don't have Ts.
I agree with that.
So, and it's nice to have parent booster clubs, but you really need to get the teachers involved. And so curious, do you have ways you think you'll be able to do that?
Yes, we've actually had conversations about that this year as a leadership team. So we are going to do a rotational basis, so every grade level is going to rotate for PTO. So that means, you know, if you have five people on your team, you're each going to take a PTO meeting, so that every grade level will have a teacher represented at the PTO meeting.
That's great, again. I think this is a good start, I really do. Ms. Johnson?
I congratulate Mr. President that you're here. I'll touch on that. Thank you both for the presentation. Ms. Blevins, congratulations again on your feature of the, or Principal of the Year. I was a candidate for the Principal of the Year. But I really appreciate your presentation. I think what I appreciate even more is my time spent in the building with you and seeing how you genuinely live, what you speak about. And so I am excited to see how these things unfold. There was one piece that I, who was, even Dr. Morrissey brought up, he was talking about relationships, and the reminder, I appreciate the journey because it reminds us that relationships can't be one-way, that we're all taking a journey so that we can make these relationships in the classroom, that much more effective for the scholar. And so I appreciate the fact that you're seeing, you see the layers of people listed here, that yes, we as the people in the district, but yes, we give our families and our students along, and hear their voice. I guess the piece that I want a little more information about is how the parents are being brought into this, or where, at what point that's going to happen.
So we've had lots of conversations about that too, just recently. One of the things that we want to do at the beginning of the year is home visits, so that will be one, so the teacher will pair up with an administrator or another staff member and visit every family in their class. In the past, we've done porch visits where we've like hit random, but that's one of the ways that we want, we want to hit everybody. And so we're going to establish that, and then maybe throughout the year, have other like porch visit times. We have done our Avid night, of course, I know you worked in there for that, where we try to bring our families in and, you know, give them a piece of, you know, what we're doing here and get interactive. I know we gave them, you know, we went over data, but we also gave them at a particular night, just some examples of what students would see on the state assessments, and really getting them involved and gave them some concrete ways that they could help their student. We do have Title I nights that are fairly well-attended, where we do games and different things to help our parents, and, but we really need to get more, where we're doing more like town hall, or maybe some more learning together, and that's one of the things that we've discussed as a leadership team. And we also need to really access, you know, our Spanish speakers too, so that's something that we've got to work out as well. If we're going to be equitable, we need to make sure that everybody can access the information. So that is a work in progress for sure, and it's something that we've been discussing as a leadership team.
Pretty much, and just looking forward to, you know, how we can support from that process. Thankfully, we shared an opportunity on the equity council together with Dr. New and Superintendent Miss Lees to, I guess, so appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Dr. Mickelson?
Dr. New referenced a video when she introduced you about a school in Chicago, and I wondered if you could send us that link so we could watch it too. Okay, sure, thank you.
Well, in case of occurrence. In case of occurrence.
Just a quick question about how are you finding implementation of Avid in the elementary level?
I think it varies right now as far as the strategies and how they are used in the classroom for teaching and learning. So just to be completely honest, that is definitely varies classroom by classroom depending on training and those kinds of things. I think our college culture is very strong, and so I think that is like a very strong piece that we have established and can work from there. My assistant principal and administrative intern and I are going to train this summer, because I've never been trained either, and so I'm really hoping that embedding it in our foundational piece and then learning more about how to make sure that I am leading that as an initiative at our school to ensure that everyone is getting equitable best practices will be key next year. But at this point, I will say there is definitely, it varies depending by the teacher.
And I'm so pleased to hear about the training piece, because I know that over the past few years with the limited funding that we've had to work around, I do believe that the professional development piece for our Avid schools has suffered. And it's definitely my hope with the incoming funding that we are able to kind of reinvigorate the Avid program, and I think that's probably mostly around that professional development piece. I know there are lots of free trainings that are part of our licensing and as well as the summer institutes. So I'm really looking forward to working with admin to see that happen for all of our Avid schools, but also with, I believe, with the new Avid coordinator.
Correct. We do, and we also wanted to mention that this year, one of the things that I've asked is that we begin hosting some of the staff development that's located in our strategic plan. So we asked him to be the host for the Avid conference in the fall for our elementary schools. We invited them here, so we are for the entire region, and then we'll allow other schools to come to us. That's one of multiple large staff developments that we'll be hosting at the Avid site, training site for this fall for the elementary. Although Ms. Blevins and her team will be going away to the Avid training, using that for team building as well for that team, the Avid hosts will allow for all of our schools to access that this fall that are elementary.
Glad to hear that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cooper?
Two things, if I can remember the second thing back for, watch right there's the first one. One of the things I note under your value statements, which we value, the statement, why do we value this? And you talked about Avid, and you talked about as making sure that you recognize that all our scholars deserve that equitable access to that kind of best practices. So my, I did this big jump, right? So my assumption is that you have not just selected certain students or certain classes, but you are trying to get this in all of your classes with all of your teachers using these practices. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
I mean, I'm so glad to hear that, because I just, every time I think, oh, we have an Avid class here, or the Avid class, something's wrong with that. You know, we ought to have an Avid school, if you will, where we're using those best practices, because it gets back to the relationship that's so incredibly important that happens with the Avid, kids in these Avid programs. So I can think, oh, that sounds wonderful, so good luck with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other question I have, and really it's probably for Dr. New, and that is, what, you mentioned Topeka High is trying to do this school equity, has a school equity program, anybody else doing this?
Yes, ma'am. We do have six schools that have equity teams, Highland Park Central Elementary, Whitson, Topeka High School, Highland Park High School, Eisenhower Middle School, and Ross Elementary.
Eisenhower and Ross have collaborated in that, in those efforts.
I listen. I mean, I'm glad to see that. You're both, obviously, you've filled, you can talk, he'd ride into Highland Park, so I'm, and I think, thanks, so I think that, that having that process makes sense, the continuation, that's important, so thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
As the equity presentation has concluded, we'll let equity members who are in the audience know that the PowerPoint will be emailed to you through Dr. New, and thank you for attending this evening. Closing the access opportunity as it relates to college and career readiness is the next topic, the PowerPoint that Mr. Dick, Ms. Nichols, and I believe just, and Mr. Kip will be speaking too. We'll start off with Mr. Kip and Mr. Dick speaking to some specific items. Ms. Nichols is passing out to you the program of study. So as she passes that out, and they jump right on in, one of the things that, why I asked the team two years ago was to begin to really align this four-year plan in a way that shows internships, T-Calc, and all kinds of other experiences that she'll speak to. I gave them a template that we used in Kansas City about eight or nine years ago, and she just ran with it and added to it. And so with that, and actually the extras, if you leave at the end, if you have any extras left, that would be great, she just added to that. But that is the exact template we use in Kansas City. And so you really see a much stronger alignment, which is far different than the program of study we've had previously. On that note, we're jumping into the very first slide. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for going through the next slide, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Kip and Mr. Dick and the team.
Good evening. We're going to talk about college and career readiness, and some of the efforts we've been doing this, and also in terms of graduation. The graduation rates are still preliminary. We are waiting for some of the summer graduates and summer programs to complete, so we have final numbers. Initially, this particular slide kind of illustrates the change in the number of graduates at each of our four high schools. As you can see, Highland Park has a gain of about 40 more graduates from last year. Topeka High is up 16, Topeka West is up 30, and Hope Street is up 15. And again, once the final graduation rates and numbers will be available, usually sometimes September, October. College scholarships, these are the cumulative amounts of scholarships earned by the big three high schools. We've got about $800,000 in scholarships at Highland Park, 4.1 million at Topeka High, and 2.5 million at Topeka West. And again, each year, we just keep continuing the ACT preparation, which involves bootcamps, preparatory courses, training, and of course, the ACT Aspire, which kind of segues into the next slide. This is year three of our Aspire, and it really gives the kids a good flavor and a taste of what the actual ACTs like when they take it, you know, the juniors are senior year. So this is the third year we test all ninth and 10th graders along those content areas that they do see on the state assessments, or I'm sorry, on the actual ACT. And it is also highly correlated with the state assessments, because they're both tapping into similar standards.
Also, I'll add just on this and the previous slide for ACT prep that we have for the first time ever, in the time that I can remember being at any of our high schools, all three high schools provide ACT prep courses as part of their regular schedule. That's something that we have not done before. For the last two years, we have all sent a number of teachers to ACT prep training, and so they've gone and got some training and come back. They've worked through that stuff in collaboration also about strategies, not just for ACT prep courses, but what they're going to do just in their classrooms on a daily, regular basis as we prepare a little more for the ACT. So we've been doing a lot more of that. We also have a lot of, like you said, there are bootcamps, and as we approach each ACT test, we have other things that happen after school and during the school day, during seminars, we'll be full of kids for to do some preparation for those things. Of course, you know, we started last year, for the first time twice a year, we give the test during the school day to try and help increase access and participation of students who don't have the opportunity to be able to do it on a Saturday, or can't afford it, or have to work, or whatever, whatever reason they can't do that. We've been a little more selective this year about who we do that with. We try to make sure they take the ACT prep course before we put them in those programs where they have some special circumstance, and we need to ensure that they take it on a, on a school day. And then for the Aspire, one nice thing that we see about that also is, it gives a really good, so kids get to take it over two years, but if they get it as a freshman, they take it again as a sophomore. And it will show them growth over those two years, so they can see where they're, and it also gives a nice report where it lines out in each of those academic areas what they need to do to improve on. So you scored well on these areas, you should work on this to increase your score in that. And so those are very helpful reports for students to have as well. So that's another pretty significant benefit, I think, of the ACT Aspire. And it gives us a chance to look at those things, see what common things come up for kids, where we need to improve, or we're doing from an educational perspective for students to help them increase those scores as well.
The final two slides are really about college readiness, so Mr. Dick will really stay, stay there. We do want to remind you that the final graduation rates aren't in, and a lot of that data isn't in yet, but we feel like this is the end of the year, just getting a very brief summary of some items that they wanted to tease out. So Mr. Dick will speak briefly to the college credits, although it doesn't have the number of students just yet, and then one final slide, and we'll answer any questions you have.
Sure. So you can see over the last three years, the increase in college credits earned, that's a combination for the total district. And so this year, we increased credit offerings at all three of the high schools, so that was probably the most significant thing that we've done. You can see that savings to families, so it's half-price tuition, so even though it is a significant cost for people to be able to do it, it is half-price. And so by doing that, this year, we've saved about $129,000 to families by being able to offer courses at school for half-price tuition with Washburn credit. That represents, Washburn, so just to give you an idea, usually a student cannot take more than two classes or six hours in a semester. In some special circumstances, they'll allow us to approve a student to take nine credit hours in a semester. Those are pretty rare. So I would say Topeka West is what I'm most familiar with, probably 60% or so of our students take more than three hours of credit. 40% just take three hours of credit. So to give you some kind of an idea, so we have roughly 60 to 70 students a year that take courses for concurrent credit, and about 60% of those students take multiple courses for concurrent credit in a semester. But it's a good opportunity, we're continuing to look to expand. We're up to being able to offer almost 30 hours at each of our high schools of credit, so we're working hard to be able to do that. We're up to about 48 hours, and we continue to work with Washburn to try and figure out a path to an associate's degree and a diploma at the same time, and we'll make us pretty good progress on that. The other things that, nothing incredibly new to what we're doing, but we're getting much better at the process, it's much more streamlined, is the senior tracking spreadsheet, so we're still continuing to do that. We've got the graduation progress for all of our seniors, we know their plans for the next level that they want to do. So we can ensure that they've taken the right test, they've got the right, the papers into whatever school it is they want to go to or whatever it is they want to do. We're making sure they complete the FAPs when they need to do that. So we're getting a lot better at those things. The state started an initiative of Apply Kansas in October. So a real big push to apply to universities in a week in October. All of the high schools took on that initiative this year, had lots of students fill out applications for college during that week. And then Dr. Anderson mentioned the program of studies as it was being handed out. So lots of changes to that, much more user-friendly, really puts a nice path in front of students as to, if I wanna do this, what is it I need to do along my way? They would do those things. And so we've already mentioned the college credit potential that we have available to those students.
Are there questions for the team? Ms. Nichols is the person overseeing counseling and halftime assistant principals. So we'll turn it over to the board.
Okay.
I just need, I heard, I thought I heard you talk about the number of students who are actually, the number of individual students who are taking the dual credit. And what did you say that number was?
At Topeka West is the one I'm the most familiar with.
So you don't know what it is for the district? I thought you gave a district one.
No, I can, I can get close. It's roughly a hundred and fifty students across the district.
About a hundred and fifty students?
Yeah, roughly a hundred and fifty.
Okay. And I was just trying, I just hear that. And I guess it's, again, I think that even that's fairly remarkable considering a hundred and thirty-five dollars for a credit, and they're usually three-hour credit courses. So we're talking a substantial amount of money that's way out of the likelihood of most of our parents to even begin to consider. So I guess that is just one of my biggest angst about this whole thing. I want more opportunities for our kids. I just, if we could just figure out some way of making this truly affordable for our kids.
There were a couple of things that have happened in the last year that have helped with that, that's also part of that increase. So there was a change in federal law around title funds, and so schools can use title funds to help pay for those courses for students. So Highland Park High School and Topeka High School both have title funds. So they have some funds through that that are available to help pay for students to do that. Topeka West does not have any title funds. We find some other ways to try and help scholarship kids. We did award more scholarships to kids than ever before. For us, a year, we awarded twelve this spring, and paid for twelve students to take courses, which is about twice as many as we had any other previous semester. But it is, it is a barrier. It's something that we continue to try to work through and find out ways to be able to do that.
I know, and it is heartbreaking when we, when we think that, I know other districts can somehow get those things worked out for, for kids. It's just, they've got a real barrier for us. So, thank you.
I have a question, actually, kinda related to that, which is, you're saying currently the price offered to our students for concurrent credit is half?
It's half of the regular tuition rate.
Regular tuition rate. So here's my question. Since seventy percent of our students are in reduced lunch, so how many of those kids would qualify for a greater degree of financial aid based on their income, if they attended Washburn?
If they attended, a significant number. The barrier to that is they have to have a diploma earned prior to being able to receive any financial, apply for or receive any financial aid. And so as long as they're a student with us and doing dual credit, that's not an option.
So that financial aid would be kind of in the form of like a Pell Grant or something similar, rather than, that could Washburn offer a reduced rate? A further tuition discount?
I suppose it could.
If, if, if those kids, upon going to college there, would, you see what I'm saying? That actually may cost them less to wait until they got to Washburn. And that shouldn't be the situation because it's our teacher teaching the class, right?
Correct, yes.
Concurrent credit is no cost to Washburn.
You know, when I worked in...
Right?
Right. When I worked in...
An administrative cost and that type of effect, but yes, very minimal cost.
Yeah, yeah.
When I worked in higher ed, there was actually, at one of the small private universities, there was a program like that where they offered basically to people in like contiguous counties of this institution, fifty percent, they were targeting high school students, fifty percent tuition discount for concurrent enrollment. If you went to this high school and you qualified, you were eligible, that became like seventy-five percent. And it was later added to your discount.
People certainly explored that with Washburn and see what opportunities there are to do that. That's pretty much the standard.
Now, they won't, they don't have to.
Yeah.
We'll definitely be having continued conversations. Two years ago, we did ask to begin that conversation, and we had advisors excel with us, and we asked that very question. And at that time, there was not a reduction, and the conversations continued about expectation and desire to see a reduced tuition rate for students because of the concurrent credit options that we are expanding, and we hope to expand. Again, our goal is thirty to sixty credit hours that they earn, but to do that, we will need a willing partner that recognizes what you just shared. Many of the students that are free lunch would qualify for a stronger discount as part of that and, and because we are so willing to expand in such a significant way.
Dr. Wilson?
Can you expand on the requirements our teachers have to have, academic requirements in order to teach dual credit?
The Higher Learning Commission, probably three years ago or so now, changed some of those requirements. So in order to be able to teach, you have to have a master's degree in that content area or hold a master's degree and eighteen graduate credit hours in that content area. And so if you have either of those two things, then you submit your transcripts, they serve by you as a teacher, and you can teach those courses. They have also instituted currently, which has been very helpful to us, an increase in the number of teachers that are able to do this. If a teacher is on a plan and taking courses towards earning that master's degree or those eighteen credit hours if they already have a master's degree, as long as they are progressing on their plan yearly, they'll allow them to teach those courses now and work towards that. So we have several teachers across the district right now that are working on plans in order to be able to get those credentials, but then are allowed to teach those courses as we, as we go currently. The Board of Regents also came up with a scholarship this year to Washburn for teachers to pay tuition for those teachers for the summer and fall who are working on those courses. So that's been very helpful as well, and really helped increase the amount of teachers that are working towards getting credentials currently in the district.
I was discussing with a work colleague today, this dual credit program. He has four kids, two are in college, two are still yet to graduate, and they attend one of the local Prokial High Schools. And he claimed that their teacher sent his daughter's schoolwork to a Washburn professor to create it. And that was unusual, and I didn't think that was our practice.
No, we haven't, and all of ours, we have a teacher, one of our teachers onsite teaches.
So our teachers are doing the homework?
Yes.
One other, Mr. Kip, I'm pleased to see our graduation numbers go up. I'm anxious once those numbers become final to see a percentage. I assume there's an increase in percentage as well, but given the increase in absolute numbers, but it'd be helpful to see a 100% basis too, so.
And that, and it may not necessarily equate to a percentage of increase, since you're talking a four-year cohort. So anyone that stopped going to school two or three years ago then is taken out of that number. So we just took raw numbers, but Mr. Kip, I'll turn it over to you and run that October data.
Yeah, just for brevity, I won't go into the whole cohort calculation, but the state purposefully puts that back in October, September, to allow for those kids that could be dropouts or non-grads to re-enroll in August somewhere. And they may be a dropout in our cohort, but if they enroll in Wichita, like in August, they're removed as a dropout from our cohort. And then, you know, so there's a lot of moving parts.
And I get that, I just, from a comparison, year-to-year perspective, it would be helpful.
I would love to give you more.
I mean, I'd love to see a revised number, but I'd also see a correlated increase percentage too, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just to, just to say that I went to the State Higher Ed Education's website, because I did, I wanted to know where some other questions I had last time. And all the high school graduation rates for the four-year cohort are in right now. And they're, they've got all the percentages. I, what I didn't know, what I thought, what, I'm glad you did it, is that I didn't know how many kids they're talking about. You know, how many, how many, in no place did they tell you how many children are represented in that percentage. But, and at least you were helping us with giving the numbers today. But, but the percentages are all there on the state website right now.
Probably the 2017 rates are. The 2018 haven't been finalized. So, I mean, I'd love to see the source if you have it, but...
No, like, so that's just, that's the most reasonable they put up there was...
They're always a year behind on the state website. So most likely, it is the 2017 grads.
Yes.
We were talking about the 2018, the most recent graduates, just kinda giving you estimates on where they might land.
So you'll have another report in October on graduation rates, then you'll have the percentages at that time at the end of October. And this preliminary data and overall just summary of how the year has concluded, we hope that comes, hopefully, with giving that snapshot, but we'll be bringing this back again in October.
So, thank you, thank you all.
We have one more slide. I don't know if...
Oh, Ms. Nichols is trying to run away, but...
Those are just the courses that we plan to have enrollment in at T-Calc for this fall. So all of these courses currently have a teacher or are actively looking for a teacher for any of these, and they all have enrollment for the start of next fall, so.
And Dr. Moreau will be doing a lengthy presentation, which is why we just kind of have it there in the background. But he would like to be the one to kind of really speak in depth to those classes and what that will look like in August, because you will be having a board meeting at T-Calc and doing the ribbon cutting there. So we would like to kind of really go into depth in that at that time.
I just answered the question. How are you, how are they advertising, what's going on at T-Calc to students? What are we doing? I mean, I know you had a sort of a thing out there for students. I forget what you call it. Open house, or like, was for the students, though, weren't there to go there and see what's gonna go on?
Sure. So the open house was actually really helpful. We had a lot of students come back within the next couple of days from the open house and ask for a program there. The other part, we've had the teachers and counselors and everyone at each of the high schools, kinda oftentimes throughout the spring, a little bit even prior, late in the fall semester, giving presentations, talking to students. All of those teachers have been to high schools multiple times to promote programs and talk through those things. And so just lots of talking to students about their interest and what they wanna do, and how T-Calc can help you do that. But the open house definitely helped. The night that we did that, we had several come back because of the schools asking about going to those programs for the next year.
And Ms. Krueger's team, the entire communications team, they've made video commercials, sent things out to parents. And right now, the enrollment is going very well across the board. The new classes are ones that we need to make sure are really out there. They've done a brochure. Mrs. Krueger also signed us up for the CAPS website, which we have access to through our feed. We have not used, the T-Calc site has not been a CAPS website in the past, although it is free and available to us and gives us all kind of new features. So again, in August, you'll see a lot of those pieces, but that advertisement alone through the CAPS network has expanded our reach far greater beyond just Topeka West schools.
Thank you, Mr. Frisner. I know Dr. Moreau will talk about this a lot more in August. You know, I got a chance to attend the open house, and I wanted to second what you said. I thought it was excellent. First of all, it was just wonderful to even be in that facility. It's amazing. You know, I tapped Dr. Moreau on the shoulders and told him, well, you know, and we really appreciate you graciously coming down to Ruffet with us here in Topeka. You look at that building. But to me, I think probably one of the ways you could really drive enrollment, and it became apparent once I saw it registered with the students and more importantly, their parents when we were there, is you have more business partners there, so it might make sense to do something where you specifically invite business partners. You invite them to the chamber to have a meeting there. I, just by looking at the facilities and the meeting spaces, I'm already planning, I'm gonna have my team for... So, so that's an ask that's coming, by the way. I hadn't told you that yet. But I'm gonna wanna have some meetings there and have tons of business and industry. You get folks in there, they're gonna get excited about what students are gonna be working on. They're gonna look at those facilities. And that's something, you know, once students start connecting what I'm learning to, you know, money, how I get in a job and getting more employment, I think will drive the enrollment out.
Thank you all. We move to discussion items. The first discussion item is 21-1, draft board, board meeting scheduled for 2018 and 19. So if you haven't already looked at that, look at it, and we can discuss it, because we'll probably go to the next one. There's, there's two 12, 12-blood meetings, I don't think. Did you see something else, Mr. Frisner?
Well, I was gonna say, the main thing I'm usually always looking for, given the way we usually operate, is when our July, first July meeting is. And I noticed we pushed it back, so thank you for that.
All right. Are we ready to... Move on to 21-2, discussion proposed 2018, 19 fee structure for students.
We just wanna share the fees have not changed for this, the proposed fees have not changed. And unless there are questions regarding the fees not changing, we are, those are really our comments. Unless, Mr. Manke, is there anything else that you'd like to share, sir?
That's it?
Short, sweet. Okay, the last, our proposed policy changes, not so short, sweet.
Well, I always like to say that we leave policy to the end because that's really what keeps people in the seats and excited. Is, is exactly that. So I understand why I was towards the end. Thank you, Dr. Morrison. I want to thank Dr. McCarthy and Mr. Woods and Mrs. Kirk in diligently serving on the policy committee this year. We've, they've had to kind of help me along and get me acclimated to the system and all of that. And one of the things that you may notice in going through some of these recommended policy changes is every attorney has their own style and what they think policy is supposed to look like and, and, you know, I would say my own little picadillo. So we've kind of worked through those and really have appreciated their, their hard work and diligence in getting these to you. So we had to break them down into two sections because the scanner didn't like having that much paper on one upload. So I think the easiest place to start would just be kind of the memo that I included. I think you will see that a majority of these are what I would consider technical changes, which means there's no substantive change to the policy, meaning the meat of the policy says the same thing. One thing that you may not be aware of is that the Reviser of Statutes changed all of Chapter 72's statutory references. Chapter 72 is schools. So every statutory reference in our policies that talk about, you know, KSA 72, fill in the blank, have all changed. So my preference always is not to have statutory references in policy for that very reason. So as you go through some of these statutory changes, essentially what we have indicated is pursuant to state law or pursuant to city ordinance or something like that. So if for some reason those do change, our policy is still up to date, and we don't have to continually have to make those changes. I do want to point out the 2550, 2557, and 2575, one of those is new, but the other two were amended to be in compliance with the Federal Uniform Grant Guidance. If you think policies are boring, you should really check out the Federal Grant, Uniform Grant Guidance. That's why I've had Mr. Manke help me with those, because I kept nodding off. No, I'm joking. We've worked in conjunction, and I really appreciated his help as well in guiding us and making sure that we are compliant with that. So you'll probably see consistently in the next few times that we bring you policy changes that we're starting to sprinkle in those to make sure that our auditors are happy as they start to go through some of this stuff. The other one, new policy is 4335, which is a lactation's accommodations, which provides for nursing and breast pumping mothers... for nursing and breast pumping mothers to have a location to do that, and there will be a regulation going along with that. But pretty much everything else is what I would consider technical changes, just kind of cleanup. One thing, another thing that we've tried to go away from is reference to, a reference to specific general directors, assistant superintendents, because we've kind of had a change in structure, what we've tried to do is consistently say superintendent and/or superintendents designate. So either Dr. Anderson is going to have a lot more on her plate, or she's just going to have to start pointing to a lot of people, which I think is probably more of what's a, but that makes it consistent that regardless of how the structure within the district changes, the policy doesn't have to be updated, but really, there's going to be no changes as to how work is done within the district. So I think that's pretty much everything, and happy to answer any questions. Look for regulations to be emailed to the board, hopefully tomorrow. I didn't want to send out the regulations before you had a chance to look at the policies, because it wouldn't have made a whole lot of sense if you got a lactation accommodation regulation and you're like, we don't have one of those, we don't have a policy on that. So, I just thought this was a more streamlined way to do it.
Policy committee has looked over this, I'm sure, and finds it favorable. I noticed a lot of information about electronic devices, etc.
One thing that we did do on that policy, if I may, is we, we really didn't change, again, the substance of the policy, but there were a few areas that the committee really felt was what we wanted highlighted, and it was kind of buried in the middle of paragraphs. So we really just did an easy switch of moving those things to the top of a paragraph, to the beginning of sentences, and doesn't change what it says, but I think it takes people's attention to essentially say, you, you're not supposed to have these out in class unless boom, 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 as opposed to, you can have them in class unless. So we kind of started with no unless, and it really, I feel, changed the tone and strengthened the policy. So that was something that the committee really took to heart and really made great suggestions to tighten up that policy.
You have any comments?
Not really, I mean, I would just say, to piggyback on what Ms. Golds said, I think the idea was to provide more direction, more clarity for teachers in those instances. The truth is, we have to enforce those policies, specifically the electronic devices policy. And in light of the attention that that issue has grabbed...
Yeah, I think in reading over the policy, we really felt that it's, any problems that we've encountered have had to do with enforcement, not with the policy itself, so that the language is there that is supportive of especially building leaders, but teachers as well, to carry through what they feel is appropriate.
Right, absolutely.
And if that policy needs to change, if we need some change in language that is more supportive of people in the classroom, then the board always welcomes those suggestions and looks for that feedback from teachers and from principals as well, because we realize that this is a policy we're probably going to be looking at every year. One thing we did do was we took out, some of the language was already archaic, you know, like, who uses a...
A PDA.
A PDA, that was still in there, I mean, you know.
So, yeah, we removed some, and it's amazing, it wasn't that long ago that it had been updated, so, but those are, the committee gets a little tired of me saying, you know, the only thing worse than not having a policy is not following the policy that you have. And this wasn't a situation where people weren't following, you know, I just think sometimes embracing the policy, because the policy was there and I think, you know, had some teeth to it, it's just a matter of putting that into practice.
Well, I appreciate that suggestion, that stating outright that the expectation is that these contribute to learning and not interfere with it, and so they are not to be used only unless there can be justification for their use as an educational tool. Notwithstanding, you know, every day's expectations around it, our culture has changed around this, there's a high expectation of instant access to anybody at any time, and, you know, it never used to be that way in the classroom, there's no reason it needs to be now, there's very little support for why that would be necessary.
I think a lot of things with policy, it's a balancing act, and that's one of those that also is...
I see a lot of nodding going along with educators out there, so, I think we're on the right track here. Before we go to, well, is any more discussion about policy? Before we go to board comments, I understand that there's a birthday coming up very shortly, and the Board of Education would like to present our birthday recipient.
It says, honored educator, in recognition and celebration of the birthday of Dr. Tiffany Anderson, the TPS Board of Education has donated $75,000 to Dr. Tiffany Anderson's scholarship fund. That is incredibly thoughtful. Thank you so much for this gift.
Thank you for what you do for us. Okay, comments, Mr. Williams?
Happy Thursday. About a week ago, seven o'clock in the morning, thereabout, I had the pleasure of traveling down the highways to UMKC, Harrisville University, St. Louis University, University of St. Louis, had a great time, it was fourteen ladies and two guys, and we were up to the challenge. I've been going on these college tours since 2002, and this was the best one yet in terms of the students and their participation and their willingness to cooperate on the rules and with expectations. I challenged them before we left that they were representing TPS as well as their families, and they came through with fine clothes, so I appreciated that opportunity.
Thank you for taking it. Dr. Mickelson?
I think it was Mr. Menke's birthday, too, if I'm not mistaken, I think he just left, but celebrate this.
Should have brought our instruments.
I don't, I do not do that. I have a CD player and a heavy guitar. One of the highlights for me every year is doing the Bike Across Kansas, and tomorrow I leave for border, and I get to stay in all these little schools, as I bike from Colorado border to Missouri border.
Jim Florus?
Jim Florus, or attempt, but I stay in the air conditioning gym. We stay in schools, and I think Ethel Edwards is doing it, too, so, she's a great queen, but it's fun to go to schools and we meet the mayors and the school, district superintendents and principals of these schools, and they share with us their town, community, and oftentimes their farming communities, especially out West, but it's fun to see different schools and be in them and see how they celebrate their schools, or their students and their school and their school pride, so I would prefer that, and I'll share it with you, if you want to experience one of that.
Ms. Johnson?
Well, I'm kind of missing all the activities at the end of the school year, and actually people always ask me, are you all in the summer, and remind them. I do, I'm actually employed by the school. I had the privilege of serving as a board member, but along with that, the presentations that we heard earlier today regarding the Equity Council, I also have the privilege of communicating, I mean, or participating in a session that's around the community, talking about this issue of race, economics, education, and I, they've had two sessions already, they'll have four in its entirety. I'm going to share that information with Dr. Morrison, and because I think if I'm not careful, they assume I represent the whole district when I come. I'm coming at it as a community person, understanding the impact of race on our community, and wanting to learn more myself, but I also would like to give my colleagues and any other of our administration opportunity, if you're interested in doing so. But it just speaks to how impactful this whole idea is, not just affecting this education which I'm grateful that we were perceptive enough to address it on this level, but that it's leading through, and then with the climate of our national news and things that went on, it's just something that is, is to have some input and give perspectives to as well.
Dr. McCrory?
I just wanted to thank everybody for stepping up and filling in for me at graduation. I was sorry not to be able to be there, but I had two graduations of my own. That weekend, I was on a mad track to St. Louis and then on to Cleveland to see both of my TPS graduates graduate from college and graduate school, so that was super fun. Nice to see them succeed with the excellent preparation that they received in our school In thinking about the equity piece, I hope that in the coming year that we also include in that gender equity, and, you know, I'm reminded of this by Reverend Williams' comment about, if you'll notice, the gender breakup of the students who attended the college tour, fourteen girls, two boys. I have really been paying attention to this, undoubtedly, because I have three sons. Every time I attend a, an honor ceremony, every time I see scholarships or awards presented, there has been a marked disparity between those awarded to boys and girls, and it's pretty much a three to one, and I would challenge you to look at that as you look up on stage and be conscious of it, and to ask ourselves the questions of why that's the case, and also why it's the opposite trend for discipline, so probably about a three to one numbers, I would guess, for boys versus girls being suspended and expelled and disciplined in various ways. Something's happening that we don't have a total grasp on, what is it about our boys that they're not achieving at the level that they should? Very proud of the girls, I don't want that comment to take at all away from their achievements, they all have been very deserving, that's not the issue, but just that, one thing I've learned through courageous conversations is you always want to ask the question of what does equity have to do with these issues, issues of achievement, when you see a disparity. So I, you know, I hope we continue a conversation about that as we start the next year ahead.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of quick reminders for board members, and one of them actually comes from something really fun that I get to do right now. So, this week and next week, we are in the midst of our Entrepreneurship Summer Business Camp, we have the Husker Energy, Big Public Schools, so we've got ten students, half of whom are actually, had been enrolled in entrepreneurship courses, Big Public Schools with youth entrepreneurs, the other half who are interested in entrepreneurship, they are in, on our property this week. They're selected, these students are selected based off of, you know, number one, their interests, number two, their interest in entrepreneurship, and whether it's in small pop type of official entrepreneurial atmosphere that we think of, or a large corporate atmosphere like ours, academic merit and strong character. Mr. Robbins actually helps us select him, appointing you those students, so. They're on our property for two weeks, and the whole point of this is for them to learn about entrepreneurship, learn about themselves, learn about the professional world, and we throw them a business challenge that they work on while they're there. So the first week, they're pretty much learning all they can about the company, the second week, we give them a business challenge, and this year, the challenge we gave them was all about water conservation, so it's a, for our science folks, is a steam-based challenge, and they are thinking about water conservation and water and the generation of electricity process, whether it's the steam cycle or the cooling cycle, or any, any way that we use water. They've kind of got Free Rain, they've got engineers, environmental and water quality engineers that are assigned to their teams as consultants. They are going to be putting on presentations, we divide them into two teams, and they compete, and our executives are actually the judges. So they'll be putting on presentations on Friday the fourteenth. You are all invited, they're open to the public, so students will be going to Topeka with West Star and Park. And I'm pretty excited about that, just because these are smart, talented young people, they're like eighty times smarter than I was in their age, which is not, you know, that doesn't do them justice, I'm not saying much, but they already kind of know what they want to do, they already are thinking about really serious issues, and it's just a fun thing to watch them work, so. Three o'clock, excuse me, two o'clock, on Friday the fourteenth, the first team will go, and they have like a thirty-minute presentation they give, then they do question and answer, and then the next team comes in and they do the same thing. So, pretty exciting stuff, I encourage you, if you're free at that time, Friday afternoon, to drop by and spend your afternoon at Topeka General Office, at West Star, Evergy, and, you know, which is the new name, and you all know the merger, actually, day one occurred on Monday, legal day one, operational day one occurred on Wednesday. So we are now Evergy, which is a combination of energy, you know, providing you your energy forever, so, yeah. So, the other thing I wanted to, huh?
I was going to say, perky soon.
What's that?
All of it.
What about it?
I take my energy blow.
Oh, I hadn't heard that one. Okay, yeah, it's okay. The next thing I wanted to remind you guys of, next week, the KASB Legislative Tour will make its way around to Topeka, so what will happen is our folks who work in the advocacy department of KASB, Mark Tomlin and his crew, will be in town, they'll be talking about the legislative session, and the outcomes of it, the court case, what the thoughts are going forward, and they'll have specific analysis from the legal department and Donna Whiteman and those folks. It will actually be at the KASB building, it's an evening thing, six o'clock, so, on the twelfth, so I encourage you to...
It's five thirty.
Five thirty, okay, five thirty, I'm coming six, or you'll be late, coming five thirty.
There you go.
There you go, good. The only other thing I have is that I'll miss the June meeting, I'll be out of town, I'll be in Chicago.
Two June meetings, one at noon?
I'll make the one at noon, I will miss the...
What day is this, the twenty-first?
I was saying, are we sure, the twenty-eighth is at noon, right? Yeah, so I'll make it for that, when it's the twenty-first, I'll actually be out of town, so, I'll beg your apologies, noon.
So it's twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Is it new?
New meeting is...
There is, but do we need to have a talk first?
That's correct.
We need to take a roll.
Can everybody, everybody make that new meeting?
I don't think I can.
Twenty-eighth. That's Thursday.
Thursday.
Fourth Thursday.
I can't approve.
Okay.
I can call them if I need to.
Well, is everybody else going to be on my end?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we got a corner. Okay, Ms. Kirk?
Okay, sorry I got the wrong year of the stuff I was looking at, apologize for that. And the other thing is, I still am going through graduation, I am so exhausted when I get home. I can't imagine that I can tolerate another one, I get another one the next day, but I kept thinking to myself, this is what I'm... day. But I kept thinking to myself, this is what it's all about. You know, that's four years, I mean, 12 years of these kids coming through here. And we've been pushing them in our home square as here for that long. We should be tired by the end of the graduation. So... Weren't just about, yeah. It's, it's... Well, and, you know, and the other thing is, those are the kids who had to suffer through all of the years of all of the horrible budgeting crisis that the state of Kansas has had to put up with. I mean, that, that, those are the kids that were babies when that happened, when that started. And, and yet they, we still managed to make things better for kids. So, I mean, I just want to say, that's my, that's my high. I really do think in a board member, they are our achievement, everyone. So, our kids, my kids did well.
So I'll just, to my daughter's warrant too, she intermittently graduated in between all the other graduations that we all attended. So she graduated from Baker University with a bachelor's in nursing and will start in the ICU at Stormont the 25th of June. She got a job. Not yet, but she will. And the other thing is, I was asked, and I assume it's because I'm on mortification, otherwise I don't know of any reason, but the City of Topeka Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Program is tomorrow from 8:30 to 5:00. And so I was asked to be on that and attend that. And so I'll let you know what develops from that. But I think community relations with the police department is very important. And on to what Ms. Johnson was talking about, the group that she's attended twice. So just to let you know, I assume it's because I'm on mortification, but I don't have that. So, anything else? I think we're ready for a motion?
Mr. President, I move the board recess to executive session to discuss individual employee contracts pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma. And the open meeting will resume at...
10 minutes.
We'll get two more. We're saying 10 minutes. I don't believe it. Let's make it.
So a second? Any discussion? Ready to vote?